Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the regular meeting of the Stillwater Planning Commission Tuesday, January 16, 2018. Thank you all for being here. Before we begin, just generally by a raise of hands, how many people are interested in speaking on this? There's only one topic here this evening. Just get a sense of about how many. Okay. That's fine. And obviously, I'm not precluding you by that statement. I just wanted to get a sense of that. All right. We'll begin then with our land use items for discussion and possible action. E&amp;M Stillwater LLC preliminary planned unit development and map amendment, PZ-17-2183, requesting review and approval of a preliminary planned unit development. Property addressed is 1220 West 12th Avenue. Rezone the property from RSS, residential, single-family, to O, office, and CS, commercial, shopping, zoning district. This item had been tabled from the 1219 commission meeting and again, the January 2nd committee meeting. Staff?
Yes. Good evening. Lance Gross with Development Services. The map amendment and preliminary PUD before you tonight is located at 1220 West 12th Avenue. The subject site is indicated by the hatch pattern on the map. The site is located on West 12th Avenue with a small extension onto 11th Avenue. The current zoning is RSS, residential, small lot, single-family. The requested zoning is O, PUD, office planned unit development, and CS, PUD, commercial shopping planned unit development. The applicant has specified that all permitted uses in the office district be allowed in the requested office zoning district. The CS zoning district is requested for the southwest corner of the property. A pharmacy is specifically identified as the only use for the requested CS zoning district. Surrounding zoning districts are RSS, residential, small lot, single-family, O, office, RSS, PUD, residential, small lot, single-family planned unit development, and RMU, residential, multifamily, urban. This is a view, a street view, looking from 12th Avenue to the north. And this is a street view looking to the south from 11th Avenue. The applicant proposes to develop the property for an office complex that will include a The six buildings are situated in a line on either side of the property with the front of the buildings facing toward the parking. The access is from 12th Avenue extending through the property and existing onto 11th Avenue. The 11th Avenue access provides a second point of entry for emergency vehicles. Parking is located in front of the buildings in small extensions excess from the center drive. The number of required parking spaces is 93, and the applicant is providing 95 spaces. The pharmacy will be approximately 3,000 square feet and will have a drive-through window that is located on the interior of the property and will not be visible from the street. There is an existing privacy fence on the north and west property lines around the adjacent single-family home. A six-foot privacy fence will be provided on the east and west property lines. The proposed landscaping is located in various locations on the property and exceeds the code requirements. Flood plane is located on a portion of the property on 12th Avenue, which requires compensatory storage or to submit a LOMAR to FEMA, bringing the property out of the floodplain. The requirement will be addressed at a later date, either with the final PUD stage or the billing permit stage. The applicant held the required neighborhood meeting on December 11. One property owner attended that meeting and had no concerns with the plan or uses. Construction is anticipated to start in late winter, spring of 2018 with the two structures on 12th Avenue. This is a conceptual rendering of one of the structures. All the buildings will be masonry with a composite shingled roof. The maximum roof pitch will be eight to 12. The building front faces the interior of the property. The typical hours of operation will be no earlier than 7:00 a.m. and no later than 6:00 p.m. for the uses. This is a zoning comparison table. This compares the uses in bulk standards for the existing zoning RSS and the requested zoning of O and CS with the proposed PUD. The only changes in the setbacks are the front and rear setbacks. The front setbacks are 20 and 25, but the requested setback is 15 feet. Findings. The PUD appears to be consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan with proposing neighborhood-scale commercial uses. Flood plane is located on the property. The compensatory storage or floodplain issue will be resolved either with the final PUD or at the time of development. A billing permit cannot be issued until a final drainage plan is approved. The PUD uses or uses are consistent with other uses in the area. Professional or medical offices are compatible with residential settings and act as a buffer between 12th Avenue and the residential and healthcare facilities to the north. Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
I had one, Lance.
Yes.
The north entry into the property proposed?
Yes.
You said it was for emergency, additional emergency access. Is it just for emergency access? Will it be like a crash gate for emergency, or will it be public use as well?
That's a very good question. We can probably ask the applicant to clarify.
Let me ask you.
Sure.
I'm not even sure, but I'm not 100% sure unless you just have to have it within the parking areas and you can have a hammerhead turnaround from the larger debate or something like that. I'm not sure it's beneficial to anybody to put it back to the natural pipeline.
Right.
Back to the little bit of that.
My thought is it either be a hammerhead, no connection, or if there is a connection, that it have a crash gate or some other, so no public access can come from that direction. And so, your comment is consistent with that comment.
Yeah, I was just worried about additional traffic back into the neighborhood.
Wholeheartedly agree. The other, it's a question, a while back, the planning commission heard and made a recommendation on the 12th Avenue plan. For this property, what was the recommendation the planning commission made to the city council for this property?
The, there are two overlays for this property. One is the neighborhood conservation and the other is the multi-use overlay. And is it the half and half?
South half is mixed use.
South half is mixed use. Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah. I had a question. Can you go back to the exhibit that showed the frontages, the 20, 15 percent, 15 feet, 25?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. The CS use is the pharmacy. Oh, right. Okay. The proposed office pharmacy. The diagram, the site plan that you showed had the pharmacy being closest to 12th Street, right?
That is correct.
And that is the use that is the CS, as opposed to the rest of the site being basically O?
Oh, that is correct, yes.
The CS setback, okay, front setback is 20 feet, and yet, they're asking to, what will, what actual setback will apply to 12th Street? Because we have all these different ones.
Very good question. The proposed setback for 12th Street is 15 feet.
Okay, is that, would that be a zoning variation then?
Yes. Actually, the RSS allows for 20 feet, the O allows for 25 feet, and the CS, commercial shopping, allows for 20 feet. So, it's a five-foot deviation.
My other question is, excuse me. The drainage issues, it sounds like there's two basic ones, not interrelated perhaps, but one is they are going to have to self-store a certain volume to ensure no off-site effects.
Correct.
And do you know what that volume is, what the flow is from that channel?
I do not.
Okay.
Excuse me. But they actually plan on doing one of two things. Let's see. And that was to submit a LOMAR to FEMA to take this area out of the floodplain.
Well...
A LOMAR does not address the detention.
Yeah. They're planning...
Okay.
It means they're planning to raise the elevation out of the...
So, you can address that when you get up here.
Yes.
I mean, I understand that their LOMAR can address it because they will engineer their way out of the floodplain presumably, and then qualify to be called out, which is fine and satisfies that issue, but the issue that concerned me more generally was, to whatever extent they're going to have to have self-storage, that it may not have to be resolved and the permits, you know, finalized at this stage, but there should be, I would think that they would have a sense of where that storage is going to go and how it's going to affect their site, because obviously, it affects the site planning. And then, lastly, knowing, to approve a project without having the assurances that they can successfully address drainage and its effects to off-site properties, you know, that would be, that's a concern that I wouldn't want to see just, yeah, you can't pull a billing permit till it's resolved. Well, yeah, but its resolution is part of the way that we would assess suitability of the site and project. I mean, that was my view.
Correct.
That's it.
Any more questions for staff?
Sorry, I had one last question. You mentioned that they're proposing six-foot privacy fencing on the east and west property lines?
Yes.
Do you have that exhibit? Is that what this zoning calls for, and does that provide adequate sound protection to the residences on, around the sides that would be off-site?
The zoning does require that whenever you're adjacent to residential uses and zoning. As for your question whether or not the, whether or not it's adequate, there's landscaping located on the east side because it's adjacent to residential, single-family. And on the west side, they are duplexes and they're a little bit further back. It's kind of difficult to say, you know, whether or not it's, you know...
How, how far is it from, you can see on this site plan, the pharmacy, because it's blue. How far is it from the corner of the pharmacy to the property, to the back wall basically of the, I assume those are the duplexes there?
That is correct.
Yeah. How far is that, do you know? I can't read it on this.
It's...
Forty feet.
It's just over 20 feet to the property line, so probably 35, 40 feet.
Okay. And it's, there's going to be a drive-through with the pharmacy. Is it set up to have stacking anywhere? What side of the building would the drive-through be on? If you can't see it from here.
The drive-through will be located right here.
Okay.
On the backside of the building, so it won't be visible from 12th Street. And it's my understanding that cars will come through here, stack, and then...
Go the other way?
Oh, is it the other way?
It's on the side plan.
There's space.
Oh, that's right.
The window.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should be on your plan sheet.
It's on the site plan.
I have electronic one, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the item, please step forward. Give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Stephen Ghost with Ghost and Associates, 113 East 8. We're the engineer for the applicant here on their behalf. Lance covered the majority of what I was going to talk about, so there's really no need to rehash that. We're here again, this project started, your first submittal for zoning was back in September of 2016 through various public meetings, rehearings, PUDs. We're here at the PUD stage because everybody wanted to see what was proposed, based from the original map amendment. Where it's just, we want to rezone it. So, now we're at the PUD. Some of the items with regard to setbacks, that 15-foot setback on the front is a lot closer than what the code, current code is. That was done as an incorporation of some of the original overlay requirements for the mixed use, where they were asking for the buildings to be moved up to the property line. No parking in front of the buildings, parking on the side and the rears. So, that's where the 15-foot setback came from. The drainage that was talked about, the detention, we've done a preliminary drainage study for this, that because of the proximity to the floodplain, the code allows detention to ask for a variance to the detention so that the drainage gets into the floodplain and out before everything else hits it. So, there's a stipulation in the code where we'll do the analysis, show what's required, and that goes to the Board of Drainage Appeals. The engineers there will review and determine if that's a feasible alternative. The pipe that we're tying into in 12th Avenue that was installed with that project has the capacity to take the fully developed flow. There's been some comments made in public that we, our client illegally filled in the floodplain. There's an earth change permit and floodplain development permit on file in Development Services' office that talked about doing that fill. It was never finished, because then we started this project. What are we going to do? How it's going to develop? We didn't want to finish all that. It made sense to get the development plan settled before we address that, but it will be addressed, the compensatory storage and what's going on within that little bit of floodplain that's on there. And if you look at the map today, the entire hospital tracks in the floodplain, but that was filled, compensatory storage, all that provided, no LOMAR. 12th Avenue was built in the floodplain. We can only hope the floodplain was accounted for in there, but this, we've got the studies and we will complete them with the compensatory storage taken into account on the front of Like I said, Lance covered everything else. Hopefully, the, I mean, we talked about the crash gate and the hammerheads, your comments there. The intent with this would now be just put a crash gate there. The hammerhead is an alternative. It'll modify the parking lot a little bit, but not significantly. This site plan also tried to meet the intent of the original planning commission discussion with regard to building sizes and proximity. Some of that stuff got rewritten with those final iterations of the overlay districts. But again, that's why we're here with the PUD, to try to show what's going on and just answer those questions upfront. So, I'm here to answer any questions now or after further discussion, I can come back up, so.
Any questions at this moment?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the item, please step forward. Give your name and address for the record. There being none, we'll now have anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item. Please step forward, give your name and address for the record, so.
My name's Michael Oliver. I live at 1123 South Gray. Thank you for listening to our concerns about this proposal. I think we're all eager to see this come to a resolution. I'm asking that the planning commission deny the request for a PUD for 1220 West 12th Avenue. I'm making this request personally and on behalf of our neighborhood residents. The city council has directed the neighborhood to create a set of overlays to guide possible future development. We have done as requested and our overlays are now part of city code. One final step remains to apply the overlays to specific property, and preliminary meetings by the city council have indicated that only the front half of this property will be designated as mixed use, as was indicated by staff earlier. The PUD in its present, as it is presented now, would violate many provisions of the current city code. Among those violations are a curb cut onto 12th Avenue, which is not allowed in the mixed use overlay, a pharmacy that is not approved as a mixed use business in the mixed use overlay, along with a drive-through window, which is not allowed in the mixed use overlay, and the high likelihood that the whole property will not be allowed to have business and development. In addition to the violations of current city code, we do not see a need for additional business development in this area. There is an existing office building on the south side of 12th Street across from Pine Street that has been vacant for roughly a year. There is so little interest in businesses locating in this area that construction on the building has not been completed for lack of tenants. Let's not allow additional development that would likely be vacant. I personally believe vacant buildings will suffer from a lack of maintenance and make the area look depressed and start contrast to the well-maintained homes along 12th Avenue. And for these reasons, I believe it would be a wise decision to deny the request and allow the overlays to be applied to specific properties before considering any request to develop. Any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item, please step forward. Give your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Alan Brunken. I live at 2820 West 15th in Stillwater. I would, I checked on the FEMA map, and indeed, it does show the south portion of this property is in a floodplain. The city in its analysis said that it's in the floodplain. Yet, when I drive by, there's been a great deal of fill. I would like to know how the fill got there, where it came from, and if I'm not mistaken, the city ordinances require a permit before any activity in a floodplain, and I'd like to know the date on the permit to, just so we know, excuse me, what the history of this site. Second concern that I had, and you guys nailed that down, I was really concerned about the introduction of retail and business traffic into the neighborhood with the access to E11th Street. A bigger concern I have, however, is my feeling that this absolutely does not fit in to the comprehensive plan. If you look at 12th Street, 12th Street from Western to Duck, how many businesses are on the north side of 12th Street right now? Zero. How many retail businesses? Zero. What is the north side of 12th Street? It's an edge to a very important neighborhood. It seems like it would be very important for the welfare of Stillwater that we maintain the health of the neighborhood. A little aside, 12th Street, its main purpose is to move traffic. And if you observe when you're driving along 12th Street, access to 12th Street is at normal street intersections. There are no half-block, there are one or two houses that empty a driveway into 12th Street, but that's because they were there before 12th Street was what it is now. Generally, access to 12th Street is, are at the, what this PUD proposes to do is set up a precedent for mid-block introduction of traffic. And that will cause safety concerns on 12th Street and/or slow down the traffic. More than likely, it won't slow down the traffic, but there will be some safety concerns. So, what I would like for you to do is have foremost in mind that the welfare and the health of the neighborhood is extremely important. Every master plan that I'm aware of says that the welfare of Stillwater depends upon the health of its neighborhoods. And this is a rare neighborhood. It's located with easy access to campus, easy access to the hospital, people that are working there can walk there, and it's moderate income housing. It's not high-income housing. It's difficult to build new, moderate-income housing. So, this is a rare and a precious neighborhood. I would urge you to turn down the PUD.
Thank you, sir. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item, please step forward and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Weeks. I live at 71...
Please bring the microphone down.
Thank you. My name is Shirley Weeks. I live at 71 University Circle. I'm opposed to the commercial part of this PUD. I support all the things that Michael said about the 12th Street overlay. I also think this is an important neighborhood. I support that the street is important for traffic and that it remains safe for traffic. I think the more curb cuts we have onto the street will impede the flow, and we need a street that remains where we can travel on it. I use the example is, would you rather drive down Jardot or would you rather drive down Perkins Road? So, I urge you not to pass the commercial part of this PUD. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also wanted to point out, we have four pharmacies in that area already.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item, please step forward. Give your name and address for the record. Anyone else? Okay. Please come forward.
Hi, thank you for hearing us. My name is Deana Atwood. And just a few comments to add to the other folks that have stepped forward.
Your address, your address for the record.
Oh, sorry. 1324 West 11th.
Thank you so much.
And something that I think is very important to say is that not only did I grow up at this address, and I'm 47 years old, but I'm now raising my son there. So, I'm a second-generation family living in a well-established development that is moderate-priced housing, which allows you to be able to put your child through college. And I'm concerned about the commercial plans that have been brought forward because of the safety, because of the well-established, because of the traffic flow. And I would like to urge you to vote against the commercial plans that have been put forward. As the folks before me have stated, this is a very important neighborhood to Stillwater that maybe some may have not realized prior to, but there are hundreds of families that are going to be affected. And, you know, inserting a small business area where there are no businesses, where it is predominantly families, where it is predominantly, you know, single housing, just seems like it's not the best idea, that there might be better areas, more suited and already zoned for this type of thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? That being said, we will now close the public hearing, and we will ask for staff's alternatives.
The alternatives accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed preliminary PUD as presented. Recommend that the City Council approve the proposed preliminary PUD with identified changes. Find that additional information and/or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to the certain date. Or find that the proposed preliminary PUD does not meet the review criteria and is not appropriate use for the property, and recommend that the City Council deny the preliminary PUD.
All right. Any additional questions for staff?
Under what the Planning Commission recommended to the City Council, in terms of mixed use, what I remember is the mixed use was for the south half, and a speaker commented under that mixed use that a pharmacy, drive-through pharmacy, would not be acceptable. Is that-
And that's for the overlay, correct?
Yes.
I believe that is correct.
I don't have any other questions at this time.
Anyone else?
Can we just confirm, what is the status of this property and this PUD with regard to the overlay? In terms of how the overlay district applies?
Okay. The status of this property, if it is recommended for approval and goes to City Council for approval, it becomes its separate PUD. And the overlay, I believe, let me verify, the overlay will not be part of this property, the 12th Street overlay.
And that's because the application was on file before the overlay became city ordinance?
That is correct.
Is the overlay approved at this time?
Hasn't had all its readings yet.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Paula Dennison, Development Services Director. The text establishing the overlay language of law is part of city code. The second reading has occurred, and it has been published in the newspaper of general circulation. So the text is available. The next step in the application of that text to individual and specific properties is what will be coming before the Planning Commission at your February 6th Planning Commission meeting, and with the recommendation to go to City Council March 5th. So the law, or the overlay districts themselves, have not yet been applied to any specific properties.
You're consistency zoning, in other words.
I'm sorry?
Consistency zoning, basically.
Basically.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember anything, and maybe I missed it, with our recommendations going to City Council about additional curb cuts on 12th Street. I don't remember approving that. Was that added at the council level?
I do not recall any specifics. I do know that it was a recommended language from the neighborhood group as part of the overlay consideration, but without going back and looking at what actually was neighborhood to Planning Commission, Planning Commission to City Council, I could not give you a definite on that.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't remember that part of it. I think that would've came to my attention, had that been something that we-
This piece of property, I have access to it, needs to have a curb cut on 12th-
Yeah, I thought that was a little-
Excuse me, 12th Avenue.
Yeah. I think that's, I have a big problem with that, just, anyway.
I think, no matter what happens, it needs to have a curb cut on 12th Avenue. And whether we approve this or not approve it, or approve it with modifications, that is an integral part of the future development of this property.
Yeah, and I don't remember that as part of the recommendation that we sent up to the Hill, so, okay, thank you.
All right. Was there any other questions for staff? Okay, there being none, discussion among commissioners.
Well, basically, I'm giving a lot of thought to this. I'm actually doing some work in Edmund right now. There's almost this exact situation on 33rd Street in Edmund. I think 33rd is very similar to the same use as 12th Street is in our town. There was an addition, a subdivision, basically just like this done, into an old existing neighborhood in Edmund. And it looks like everybody's getting along fine. All the houses around, I even went around the back and looked, just because it got my attention for this meeting. And all the houses are full, it doesn't look like there's a problem. So I think, again, I've said it before, 12th Street is a major thoroughfare across our town. I do like the way the developer has basically made it to where only, the only traffic going in and out of this subdivision would be onto 12th Street. Heard my concern with the road going to the back. I do think we need to maintain that mainly from a fire safety standpoint, but again, like Mike had said, put a crash gate on it where it's only for fire department emergencies, no public access back into the neighborhood. So with that, I would support this.
Crash gate would be one thing, putting grass pavers back there so it doesn't look like a roadway, but a fire truck can get through is another, another option. I don't think we ought to dictate that type of purpose, but we need to dictate that it be, no public access be allowed. And how that is done, the staff can review that and do that, so.
I just want to make sure fire safety's thought about, and a truck can get through there. I'm not hung up on a gate either, so.
I've done grass pavers in the past. You do a mountable curb, and it, and it doesn't look like a driveway, but then the, whenever, no matter what the weather is, the fire truck can get through. So that, that certainly is an option to me. The floodplain issue is something that the staff will go through, and our ordinances in the City of Stillwater are real clear on that, and I have confidence that the staff and the engine on this project can work through and do what's according to ordinance and state and federal laws. To me, that is not an issue in my mind. The question in my mind is, we had lots of public hearings, and we did an overlay district where the south half was mixed use. The north half was not mixed use, but this has the entire area, as I'll refer to it as, mixed use, office and commercial. And that's where I have a concern in my mind.
What would alleviate your concerns in that regard? What might, I mean, is it concern like, what are you talking about?
I'm not sure yet. I want to hear from the other commissioners, and, and I've heard Commissioner Ryan, and I respect him very much. I, you know, I have a, we had the overlay, and then I'm thinking, well, if we do the entire area, I can see that being economically viable. I have a concern about how it affects the neighborhood, but I think the majority of that concern has been addressed by the fence and landscaping.
That's where I'm at, too, Mike.
Would the mixed, would the mixed-use overlay support a true mixed use of, say, a pharmacy, pharmacy and office at the frontage, and then residential, or duplex, or any other kind of housing in the back half? I haven't, I'm not up to speed on this overlay yet, so, does anyone?
Well, and originally, that was kind of the way it was-
A classic mixed use.
The very first time it came through, it was actually, I think, going to be some apartments, if I recall, back in 16.
Residential multifamily.
Yeah, residential multifamily, and so that wasn't, wasn't taken any further. And so I think that's the reason they brought it in as a PUD, just so everybody would know what they were getting.
I think I'm just conflicted about how much we consider the overlay. Obviously, we've talked a lot about the overlay, we approved the overlay districts, they went to City Council. But this is not yet a case in which the overlay districts would apply to the properties, so do we consider them, or do we not consider them? And I can see that they've made some attempts to look forward to the overlay being applied and to, you know, the setbacks it with.
Building size.
Exactly. And on the other hand, as Commissioner Booker says, the mixed-use overlay would not apply to the entire property. The pharmacy would not be allowed within the mixed-use overlay, so, I don't know what to think about this.
The pharmacy and where it's located, I really don't have a problem with, myself. What I'm wrestling with is, should we allow this PUD to be on all this property, or should it be just the south half? And that is-
You know, I have a problem, Mike, with, with one person's property having two uses on it. I don't know that that was not a little bit short-sighted on our part, saying, you know, just the front half of somebody's property. It just seems maybe that was an oversight on our part.
It's not going to conform with your Assessor Parcel number. Well, it might, but it's not going to conform to the site plans.
And again, it's not, it's not actually an overlay yet either. So, you know, that's where we're at today.
It's not an overlay, but as I've stated several times, we recommended that to the City Council, so that has some weight in my thought process.
I address that. I address that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I- Does anyone have any concern with allowing him to speak on this?
I have not.
No concern. Or you may come up.
Part of the reason the multifamily went away is there were some concerns that we heard from, from various different people in the community about the multifamily. Also, within the overlay district, the neighborhood conservation doesn't allow multifamily. This tract in the back only has that 40 feet. If we cut it in half and did the mixed, the office on the front and the residential in the back, you've got basically a non-conforming lot. You could build one house back there. And so the way we interpreted the overlay district as multifamily wasn't even allowed. So it shook out and made sense. And we heard some, we heard input from the community also, that some people in the community, not everybody, again, that they would prefer the office in their backyard as opposed to apartments, because you know, in the evening, the doors are getting locked and people are going home. You don't end up with apartments that are rentals or a potential rent house back there that, there's people there at more times of the day, the possibility of there being more noises in the evening. So that's, that's why it went away, is that you really, one, we heard that multifamily wasn't desired, and that with the uniqueness of this lot, it really makes it hard to develop that back as any other way. So, any questions on that?
Thank you. Thank you very much. We don't want to open up to 11th. So if you split the thing, then how are you getting people to the back of the lot? Because you don't want to open to 11th.
Right.
So that was part of the reason also why we got away from that, is to say, we only have it from 12th, not from 11th.
Well, if everybody's done, I'd like to try to make a motion, unless there's further discussion.
I just, I wanted to give my thoughts on this, I suppose. You know, I did go out and look, physically see the site and get a sense of where it was amidst the neighborhood. And I, it's, what's interesting is, my initial feeling was, well, you've got the medical uses right there, this is right adjacent, it makes sense from that standpoint to have all this here. But I actually, the letter we received, and, and thinking about some of the things the community has said, the bigger question to me is, do we actually need more commercial in this strip amongst these, this community of existing homes? And two, what would the impact of this development have on that neighborhood? I mean, when you consider the way that those houses are laid out to that, to that street there, the way that the houses are laid out versus this lot are also, they would certainly be affected by the walls and stuff going up. So at this point, it, you know, I think I'm, I could see with the overlay and stuff, the supporting some alternate form of development or alternate proposal for that front part via the overlay, like you were saying, but this as proposed, personally, I'm not seeing it. I guess that's kind of where I'm at. I wanted for you guys to consider if it affects how you want to.
Well, I'm going to make a motion. Accept status findings and recommend the City Council approve the proposed preliminary PUD as presented. I'll make one other, without access, except for emergency vehicles to 11th Street. I'd like to add that to the motion.
Second.
Is it moved and seconded to accept recommended staff findings with-
Okay, go ahead. I have some discussion before we vote on this.
Okay. With the restriction of not access to 11th, just the crash thing, whatever we were talking about. Yes. Moved and seconded, discussion.
The only other thing I'd like to discuss is the privacy fence being a six-foot privacy I've been involved in developments like this, and we've done an eight-foot privacy fence. And there's advantages and disadvantages to that. And one, one major disadvantage is that that fence is much higher than other fences in the area. So, Commissioner Ryan, what do you think about that?
Personally, I, you know, I think eight foot would be fine. It might help cut down some of the noise concerns that the neighborhood, you know, voiced. I do not have a problem with, with the requirement going from six to eight feet.
So I'll make a motion to amend your motion, so we can vote on it first.
Sure.
That the fence requirement be an eight-foot-high privacy fence instead of a six-foot-high privacy fence.
Bill, withdraw your second. Return to his motion, let him amend his motion.
You shouldn't second it. Yeah.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, then I'll come back to my original motion and add that the privacy fences, as seen on the site plan, be eight-foot tall in lieu of six feet.
Second.
All right. It has been moved and seconded to accept staff findings and approve the development without, with no access to 11th Street, except for fire and privacy fence requirement of eight foot.
Except for emergency-
Emergency.
Traffic.
Traffic.
So if it's an ambulance, or police, or other emergency-
You got it.
It's allowed.
All right. Emergency traffic, and that the fencing, privacy fencing must be eight feet. All right, we will now, then we will now vote. The motion, the vote is three to two, the motion passes. The next item for business is, one moment. Approval of the meeting summary for discussion and possible action, the regular meeting of January 2nd, 2018. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and now vote. Motion passes five to zero. Miss ladies and gentlemen, from staff for discussion, next planning commission is February 6th, 2018. I have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion passes five to zero. We are adjourned.